Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, we're gonna call this, uh, meeting to order. At this time, I'm gonna ask Dr. Boston to lead us into, uh, invitation and pledge allegiance.
All right. Let us pray. Oh, heavenly Father, Lord, it's again another time we assemble ourselves together to conduct the business of Jasper County Planning Commission. Well, we ask you to crown our heads with wisdom and knowledge that we may do those things that are beneficial to the citizens of Jasper County, but most of all, Lord, that are pleasing to you. Father, we ask you right now to just go with each member individually and bless us collectively. We thank you for all these many blessings in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance.
Thanks.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to thank Dr. Boston for the implication and, uh, leading us into the pledge allegiance. The first thing on our agenda this afternoon is approving the agenda for this afternoon.
Commissioner Jenkins, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Boston, ready for question? Hear none, all in favor of such motion, let it known by saying aye.
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 And the opposed is by the same sign. Okay, the next thing on the agenda for this afternoon is approving of the minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Okay, second by, uh, motion by Dr. Boston, second by, uh, Ms. Ferguson, ready for question? Hear none, all in favor of such motion, let it known by saying aye.
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 Any opposed is by the same sign? Hear none, the motion carried unanimously. Old business, road name, um, petition, Ruben Drive. Okay, uh, y'all quite familiar with this, this was on our agenda last time and I believe from information I've received that they have did they do deal? And, uh, do we have any questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
Uh, Lisa, could you, uh, Mr. Pinkney? Lisa, could you bring us up to date on what took place since we met last?
Yes, sir. Um, so the road going in from Pierceburg, it was built, it looked really good, the internet, the fire marshal approved it. Um, but he sent a fire inspector out there to look at the road. And, um, the fire inspector did not know to look, he didn't realize the road in the back turned right, which you see on the plaque. So he didn't look at that, and in fact, that road was not, there was a turnaround put there, so it was not completed. And, um, the, since our meeting, well, just last week, the applicant who signed the petition, they've constructed the road, the fire marshal office has turn, has, um, sent over a letter about four o'clock today stating that it meets international fire code. And, um, there's nothing obstructing the road and it passed their inspection.
Okay, you said the road, uh, didn't have a turnaround point when we looked at it last time?
It did, it terminated and had a turnaround instead of being built where it turns to go to the right. Um, it didn't turn to the right, it kinda dead, it, it went off to the right just enough to access that first slot. And they put a turnaround there, they didn't build the road all the way through in the back.
I'll put her in the bathroom.
And the fire marshal didn't know to look there, so he apologized and, um, the fire inspector, not the marshal.
Okay, so everything is in order now?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Pinkney.
Okay, um, Dr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, comment?
I don't, um, um, Lisa has really taken care of the situation and my concern was, um, from last month was that there was no road that allowed access to the four lots that would be, I suppose, sold. And, um, she worked with, I guess, the fire marshal to make sure that road was put in. And so they have approved everything and I'm fine with that, I, you know, I was just concerned that there was no access to those four lots, so that's been cleared up, so thank you, Lisa, I appreciate that.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Butler. Mr. Robertson?
Um, none, not, no comments.
Uh, Ms. Ferguson?
Nothing else.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins?
Um, Mr. Chairman, let the record show that I will be voting on this because I left the meeting early last month before this petition came before us. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one other, I have one other comment. Uh, you know, this was brought before us with the expectation that everything had been done. How could they have missed this again? That's what they do.
Um, this was highly unlikely, so I didn't suspect that anybody missed it, but when Dr. Butler kept calling, I said, something must be wrong. Um, the fire marshal normally goes out there and inspects the road. But he sent us a fire mar, a fire inspector. And the fire inspector, I guess, did not have the plat in the field and he, the road went in, it was newly constructed, it was good, but he didn't know that it went to the right. So, um, after I talked to Dr. Butler a few times, I started saying something's wrong. And I highlighted, I sent the plat and I copied everybody, I copied the code enforcement officer, the fire marshal, the fire inspector who inspected it, and I sent it to him and I said, something, can you please verify that this road goes, turns right there in the back, to serve those four lots? And that's when the fire inspector, he called me and he said, Miss Lisa, I, I didn't know to look there, I'm sorry. So, um, I let the applicant know that it, I wasn't gonna recommend the road name be approved because the plat should have never been recorded if it wasn't done. Had I known it was done, that plat would not, if I'd known it was not done, that plat would not have been recorded. So they got busy and built the road.
Yeah, and you said this is highly unlikely, this does not happen that often. You know, we, I myself don't get out to do a lot of site visits, so when I get information from you guys and the fire folks and the people who do this for, that's their job, then I expect it to be right, so if, if Dr. Butler didn't catch this, it would have gone on through.
Yeah, and then I could fill you in a little bit more about the, more about the situation offline.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's no question, a comment, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make, make a motion that we approve the road, uh, naming.
Okay, it's a motion by Dr. Boss, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Robertson, ready for question? All in favor of such motion, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed is by the same sign? Hear none, the motion is carried unanimously. Okay, the next thing on our, uh, agenda is discussion. Uh, A is annual report, uh, we'll have Ms. Wagner to go through this and bring us up to date on this.
Um, every year I prepare annual report for you, um, we're, the planning commission is required by state law to give an annual report to the county council. So the first report, um, you should be looking at is the twenty twenty three annual report for the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals, this is, um, the report that we're required, uh, to uh, forward to the county council. And this is just a recap of each of our meetings last year. Um, there, we didn't have a meeting in March, October and November, but we had a meeting, um, all of the other months, and I won't go through each one, cause you can read them. Um, but I also list the current planning commission members at the bottom of that report. Because sometimes, as you know, we have vacant seats and we need to make our council aware of that so they can be filled, but with the most, um, recent appointments of Mr. Robinson and Mr. Gramlin, they're all filled, so, um, we had continuing education, you know, you're required to receive three continuing education credits a year. Um, Mr. Gramlin and Mr. Robinson was not a part of the board when we had that continuing education. And they'll be required, since they're new, to have six hours of, um, uh, orientation, uh, this year. So they won't need to meet the three hour requirement for twenty twenty four because they'll just need to meet the six hours. Uh, we will schedule that continuing education fairly soon, um, we used to do that in May of every year, but since COVID, South Carolina Association of Counties, uh, they didn't do their webcast, their live streaming that they used to do and they went to virtual and now they've started streaming again, but they don't do it until November, so. And then, um, behind that report is the Board of Zoning Appeals, they only had one meeting last year, but they had two requests during that meeting for, um, appeals from setback requirements. And, uh, those, that board's fully, um, seated now, we have five members, Mr. Brian Polston is the new member that was appointed there. And Ms. Chalmers had been appointed before him, um, a little earlier in the year last year. And then, uh, we reported their continuing education. So that is that report. The next report is, um, the Jasper County Planning and Zoning, the year end report. Um, this report is just really based on all of the, uh, the fees that we collect from land development permits, which are major site plans or minor site plans, uh, subdivision applications and master plans. And then our everyday fees are just, um, exempted in plats, tree clearing permits, zoning certificates, zoning letters, zona map amendments, uh, the variance, um, applications and our zoning permits. The review fee and the site inspection fee, those two fees are held in escrow, they don't really go into our general funds, those are always associated with commercial projects. And, um, at, once, those are used to pay like Thomas and Hutton or whichever engineering firm that, uh, the county consults with to do plan review fees or to do inspection of the site infrastructure, it's paid out of those escrow accounts. Um, but looking at our, uh, our admin fees, which is item C, we collected a hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cent in just permit fees, that goes into the general funds. And for many years, those fees used to not be over sixty-five thousand dollars, we struggled to carry our own weight in the planning department, if you just look at it from the planning department. But last year it was up to, matter of fact, it was, um, about a hundred and, almost two hundred dollars more last year than it was this year. So, um, the, I will just point out, I think y'all are always interested in this, the very top uh, column, the major site plan, those are, uh, projects, not necessarily all new development, but some are, we had the Gillisenville Lakes. Um, a quality beverage, the quality beverages existing, they had proposed an expansion, now they're not gonna go through with what they planned, they're cutting back. Um, we had a tail fair track, that one's not gonna go through either. And, um, Citadel Storage, that's being built now at the Center Point PDD. A Seaport Container Storage, Bishop of Charleston, that's the Catholic school, they're always making site improvements. Um, the Bailey Park, the CSP, which is the PDD, but it's that, um, for rent community. So they have submitted their site for their site plan, then we had, uh, the Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority out at the Pierceburg Plant. Um, Alligator Alley and, uh, another John Paul Two, uh, project. And, uh, Auto Nation Genesis, then under our minor site plans, we had the Bryan Mine, the Refuel Yamassee, that's a, an existing gas station in uh, Point South, Oyster Park, a major subdivision that came before y'all. And the Next Chapter Neighborhood, which is also a bill, uh, bill for rent community in the Center Point PDD. But I think the one y'all might enjoy the most is the, uh, last report, which is the Jasper County Building Permit. And, um, you'll see, this one, we issued, uh, seventy-five new single family residents. We issued permits for twelve duplexes, which are twenty-four units. Uh, eight quadplexes, which totaled thirty-two units, we had twelve new commercial, uh, buildings who were permitted. Our existing commercial improvements, uh, that's forty permits, forty, uh, commercial sites, uh, buildings that already exist that, uh, plan to either add on or just outfit, a lot of it was really just even electrical upgrade, as you could see there. The, um, residential improvements, we issued two hundred and seventy-one permits. Compared to last year, uh, well, if you turn on the back, we had a hundred and twenty-seven mobile homes. And then we had just other permits, but these aren't permits that really bring in new structures, they're like certificate of completion. Uh, there was a sign permit, certificate of occupancy, these, the certificate of completion and the certificate of occupancy, those really were just inspections. Uh, there were twenty demolition permits and we charged seventy-one re-inspection fees where they call us and we get there and they're not ready. And, um, but the grand total of permits were six hundred and fifty-five permits. Compared to last year, we, um, only issued a total of five hundred and seventy-four. Um, our building permit fees that we collected, they were, uh, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. That was almost two hundred thousand dollars more than last year. And then the very last report is just a comparison that I've been doing for you. So the twenty twenty-three is at the bottom of the page, um, on the right-hand side. And compared to twenty twenty, it starts with twenty twenty, then twenty twenty-one, then twenty twenty-two. So you could see each year we've been writing more and more permits. Um, now, we did track this just a little bit different, cause all those inspection numbers that were in our building permit fees, um, application numbers, we didn't put that on here, we just put the structures on here or, um, improvements. So on here it's showing five sixty-nine compared to five thirty-seven last year. Compare that to twenty twenty-one, it was five oh eight and the twenty twenty was four eighty-seven. So we've been busy, and if you have any questions, I'll certainly entertain them.
No, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Pinkney, this is Deborah Butler.
Yes, go ahead on Dr. Butler.
Lisa, um, how much above the cost of operating the department does the department take in? What's the difference between what is actually taken in by planning and what is used to run that department, employees and everything?
Well, we do get that in the building, so, um, when you add in the building, it covers the shortfall on the planning and we would add these two together, I can give you a quick.
Well, I was, I'm gonna, you guys.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
You guys are, are so overworked and unable to, to do many of the things that you would even like to do. It just occurs to me that if the planning department is carrying its own weight, in other words, it's not costing the citizens any additional money, but is taking in enough money to fund another position, that maybe that's what the planning department should consider is requesting um, another employee, and I don't know if the planning commission gets into that kind of thing, but I mean, I, it, it seems reasonable to me.
Without having my budget in front of me, I'm gonna say we probably have a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand X, X over. Um, and I do plan to ask for another employee, I'm gonna use these reports to, uh, certainly, uh, get another person in, especially on the building side to, we're gonna ask for another inspector and another person to process permits. Um, we have had another planning position funded, but we've not been able to get any substantial applications for that position. So I have money in the budget for that and I'm gonna ask to use that, uh, to get another person just to really help with customer service and to do some of the everyday things so that I can spend more time training Tara, because Tara stays extremely busy and she's very capable of being trained and learning more stuff, so, uh, that is my plan and, um, and see if we can get another inspector as well.
So you currently have funding for, did you say, I missed this, it was customer service?
No, I have funding for a entry level planner.
Planner, okay.
Yes, but we're taking applications now for a planning technician and, um, I've only received two applications and one of them has already found another job, so. Yeah, it's, you know, everybody that I know in other departments, it's been really hard to find workers and especially in positions where you really, um, like in a planning position where you need to have some sort of knowledge, some sort of background, it's, it's been tough, so. But it, so I think it'll be better used to try and ha, actually, I got, second customer service, but it's processing permits, it's really like a permanent technician job. So I'm, I ha, I have one position, but I'm gonna ask for a second one.
Okay, well, um, is that something that we would support, Mr. Pinkney, um, through sending a letter or something, or that's totally out of our realm of, um, involvement?
I would say we could, but I think that, uh, attorney, he, he would vouch for Ms. Wagner that everything that goes on in that department to the, to the council.
Okay, I just wanna support her.
Yeah, and Mr. and Mr. Kemp, he, he oversee the planning mission and planning and he can make recommendation, um, to the rest of the council.
Okay, alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Robertson? Any questions?
No, I, I will just say, I did a little more research on spot zoning, which was a topic of one of our last meetings. And with Ms. Wagner, my only real question would have to do with spot zoning. Um, in that instance where you're backed up to another municipality and, you know, zoning that in theory would have been in line with what that particular applicant was asking for. Um, does spot zoning ha, can spot, spot zoning still occur on a boundary versus like something that's centralized or surrounded by other non-conforming, um, zones? It would just have seen, and I didn't wanna bring it up last week and muddy the water or last month, but
Sure.
It seemed, it would seem to me that something that's up against the county boundaries that is adjacent to another municipality that has a different zoning than our county guidelines were showing that, I don't know that the spot zoning in my professional opinion, applied to that particular case, but, um, do we have any other instances in the county up against the boundary that that's the case, or am I just wrong in my thinking that that would still be spot zoning even though it wa, it was on a, on a boundary property?
So the comprehensive plan, um, suggests when you're adjacent to the municipal boundary that you would annex, so that's, so, and therefore the comprehensive plan states we're going to grow our municipalities and keep the county rule. So in this case, had we rezoned it to industrial development, we've opened ourself up to all the other properties who might not be on the boundary but are adjacent or very near this property to come in and ask for industrial and create an industrial corridor, which goes against the comprehensive plan, so.
I, I, I think it's fascinating as an architect to like, the county would be, obviously the recommendation was to annex in the Hardyville for that particular applicant. But do, I, I'm almost the opposite of, yeah, we need to protect our resources, you know, we should. And, and there are cases, you know, Chelsea Plantation and some of the things that may get annexed into the town of Ridgeland, which, you know, I would have a particular set of opinions on that are, are kinda similar, but at the same time is recommending the annexation the right move, cause it's property that the county never gets back, you know, it's, not that there's not a way to annex it back or unannex it, but the, I, I've never heard of that happening.
Well, I agree, it doesn't make sense sometimes, but, um, but the municipality, especially Hardyville, when we first set all this up, they wanted us to remain rural and probably so they could grow their boundary. I think what the county would really like to see, which they have done, is to draw their boundary and agree not to go beyond it. Um, they drew the boundary, but they have went beyond it, but that's really neither here nor there for tonight's discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's interesting to talk about spot zoning and then we have spot annexation, you know, it's, it's, it, it's, it's, um, we get into the heated debate with Chelsea, um, plantation all the time, uh, with clients and, I'm, I live in that corridor, so I have a particular set of ideals, um, about that, but my only other question is the moratorium on permit applications.
Um, Mr., 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 Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
Um, can you hold those questions, um, right now, and let's ask some questions on the report Ms. Wagner just made and those questions you can ask.
Okay.
In our, in our open, in our open discussion.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I thought we were already in that portion, so I can wait.
Okay. Uh, um, Mr. Jenkins, you have any questions on, uh, the report Ms. Ms. Wagner just made?
I just, I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, um, you said it was a hundred and twenty-seven mobile home permit?
Yes, that's right.
Um, my mind go back to you, the, the strict rules we have on mobile home with the thirty year and you make sure these mobile homes are not older than they were supposed to be. Um, who polices that when these, when these, uh, application come through your office? Does somebody go out and make sure that these mobile home meet standards? Now, let me make it, let me just make it plain, I don't have anything against mobile home, cause I lived in one for years. But I do know we have laws on the book that, you know, cause we have a lot of decapitated buildings and mobile home in this county. Do somebody, when these application coming for you, does somebody go out and inspect and make sure they meet the guidelines before they get a permit?
So you have to submit all of that when you fill out your application. We get the bill of sale, the applica, or either the title to it, so we know the year. And, um, also you have to provide us with the one zone two designation, we have a whole entire checklist. If it's used, you have to, um, submit pictures, so we're checking off every requirement before we issue a permit. Once the permit's issued, the, um, building inspector does go out and inspect it, so, um, the pictures are to make sure that they're habitable, that is something we started in two thousand and eighteen when we amended the mobile home ordinance, so you, you have to prove all this to us in order to get your permit.
Oh, um, my, my final question, I notice all over the county, there's a lot of these RVs are popping up. Near people homes are popping up on property. Near people homes are popping up on properties and being hooked up. What is the rules for these RVs?
You're not supposed to live in a RV. We don't give power to RVs. Um. You're allowed to store one in your yard, but you're not supposed to have power or um, living in it. And we don't give power. I know some people are getting it. I'm not sure how they do that. They might be hot wiring it from their house. We. Do know of a incident recently where that's happened. They ran the wires from the house, but um. They've been put on notice that they have to disconnect, um. And we're not able to police the whole entire county, but boy, I know it is a problem.
It's a lot, it's a lot I'm being popped up, I tell you, and and some of them have lights, some of them have light poles. I don't know if they're putting it to them themselves, but I let's hope when you get a new staff, that would help. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Um, Miss Ferguson. On the report that Ms. Wagner just gave.
Well, no, I don't have anything else. I just noticed one thing, though, on the mobile homes, you don't have a reported value.
Yeah, we don't uh, track the value there because you have the new ones, but then you have old ones and it's really hard to. Put a value on the old ones, um. And when I say old, I don't really mean old as much as I mean should be using the word used when they're used, mobile homes and. So and so's bringing it from Beaufort or they paid two thousand dollars or maybe they paid ten. But we don't have any way to value those, so we don't track the value.
I see.
The assessor's office eventually values it and they use um. It's kind of like a Kelly Blue Book, but it's not a Kelly Blue Book. It's some kind of book they have for mobile homes. Once it gets registered, they start doing that.
Okay, I was just wondering if they didn't have a value, how do they assess a tax to it?
The assessor's office will do that once they get it registered. They use a book.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Boss.
Uh, yeah, Lisa, you said this is required by the county that you do this report?
Actually, um, the state law requires that the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. Uh, forwards a report, a report of your meetings are supposed to be. Given to the county council, and of course I shared the same information with the council. As well as the planning commission report, um, they enjoy getting the permit information too.
Okay, and this summary is supposed to be a part of that report as well?
That's something I just started a couple of years ago, just to be able to track and compare to the past few years.
Okay, one other question. I was just curious, uh, do the municipalities uh, put a report together like this of what they're doing?
They do. We don't always get a copy. I can certainly ask them if they'll share a copy with us.
You know, a lot of things are going on within these municipalities. We have no idea of, and I'm just curious as to find out how much development and how much uh. Reported value and things like that are happening in the municipality. I mean, it's probably none of our business, but.
But Hardyville has shared with us before, not always, but I'll be happy to ask them.
Yeah, just curious. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Uh, Dr. Butler?
Um, no, I my, I've already spoken on this. I've um. I was only concerned about the possibility of whether or not we brought in more money or the planning staff brought in more money. Then is required to run the department, and Lisa answered that for me, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. If no further question on the report, we will move on to the next thing on the agenda is open discussion. And Mister Robinson, you can bring up the issues that you had in mind at this time.
Yeah, I think, and this should be short. The the last one was just about the moratorium. With permit applications. I've had a couple builders ask me that and I'm just not as familiar with that. Cuz most of my personal work is in Beaufort County. Um, we do a little bit of Jasper, Hampton, Collin County, but not a whole lot of work in in um, Jasper, but. Uh, I just wanted to see what the status of that moratorium on permitting and what the status of. You know, even some of the stuff, like I I'm I'm getting blasted, which annoys me um, by keep Chelsea Rural. Um, Perpinalia, getting left out on our residential properties on our vehicles. So there there's people coming on to private property to put, you know, pamphlets and flyers on our vehicles, which. I don't believe should be happening, but it is happening.
Um, the moratorium was set to expire. It is set to expire at the end of March, um. We staffed us intend to ask for the moratorium to be extended. Because we're not gonna be able to have three readings. You know, we went through the holidays with the moratorium and we just needed more time to complete the work. Um, there is gonna be a public meeting on March twenty-fifth. We hope to have a lot more meat and potatoes to present to the public. So uh, definitely want you to put that on your calendars to join us. It's on a Monday night, the last Monday. It'll be in the uh. County council chambers at six o'clock. We haven't put out any notices yet. Um, we. We do have an ordinance ready for council. We'll be get uh, taken to them on March. Fourth, I think the fourth's the Monday, the first Monday of March, um, and asking them to extend the moratorium, so um. I believe they will, um, will pass first read and then we're, and attorney set it up. To have a public hearing at that meeting, and then we'll need two more readings, but it'll be a pending ordinance. And um, we, in that ordinance, we are asking for it to be extended till the end of July. Um, you know, I think there may be some discussion about that date, or maybe. Uh, the council may see fit to extend it another thirty days or so beyond that, just to make sure we meet our goal. But we we wanna get from under the moratorium as quick as we can, but. This kinda work takes time. It takes time to compile the information and data and uh. Hear from the stakeholders who represent a diverse area. It's not just one group, you know. So um, if you haven't went online to the county website and filled out a survey. I would love for you to do that, you know, that's one way anybody can share uh. Answer questions and provide feedback. Um, if you go to the county website to the planning department. And go to the comprehensive plan update. You can, there's a link there to a survey you could fill out, uh, you could sign up for email and you can leave comments and. If you sign up for email, you're notified of next steps or when we have a meeting. And then we'll be, uh, once we have this public meeting, we'll, you know, that's all just a part of collecting this data. We'll be bringing that to the planning commission.
Any questions or comments from anyone else?
Uh, Mister Pinkney.
Go ahead, Dr. Boss.
Oh, yes. You you, we talking about the moratorium, we talking about the the comprehensive plan, and these things coming together at the same time, or we have one before the other?
Well, yes, so you know, the purpose in the moratorium, uh, and which is just the U-Haul Creek area. Highway four sixty-two from highway one seventy and part of one seventy from the intersection of uh, four sixty-two. Uh, going north um, towards Beaufort and then up Snake Road and Takusahatchee, basically. And everything west of I ninety-five in that area, but the moratorium came to be so that we could. Work on the comprehensive plan, so yes, they they go together. Um, as if you remember, we're doing the comprehensive plan in two parts. The part one was this area that's covered under the moratorium. And then part two will be, uh, once we're com- we've completed that and we've lifted the moratorium, we'll go on to. The future land use map as it, you know, in general for the rest of Jasper County.
Okay, so we're we're gonna put it, when we will, that will all be in the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Whatever we do, we don't have to do that and make it go back and redo something later on. To make it all fit together from the beginning is what I'm asking.
So right now, we are just focused on the area in the moratorium and we're gonna come up with um. Regulations or um, you know, provide more. Meat, we're gonna add on to what say are for this area. And then um, we're gonna go into phase two, which is to look at our future land use map and. Future land use for all the rest of Jasper County, so that'll be a whole nother process, but we won't. As far as I know, we won't have a moratorium in place then.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Doc Butler?
Um, yes, thank you, Mister Pinkney, and I wanna apologize to you and the other commissioners for coming in late to the meeting. Sorry about that. Um, but in regard to uh, Mister Jenkins' concern about the mobile homes being brought in. Um, people are bringing mobile homes in without permitting. And Lisa, I don't know, uh, case in point on this Ruben Drive, um, where they're trying to get this road in. There is already an RV that was brought in without any permits there, and this is, I don't think it's uncommon. I don't have any. Data to support that uh, feeling I have, but just from my observations in our area. Uh, people don't always conform, but Lisa, are people, is is there um, something in our rules to provide for penalties? If they don't meet the minimum standards, can we make them move it? What what are our options?
If they don't meet the minimum standards, they will have to move it and um. We didn't know that they brought in the mobile home at Ruben Drive, and I did confront the person about that. And they claimed um, that that wasn't really the mobile home they were bringing there. They were just under pressure and had to move it from where it was. But that should not have happened, and I, maybe that is gonna be the mobile home that gets set up there. We haven't permitted the mobile home here yet. Because we were waiting on nine-one-one address, but we will indeed uh, double fee them. Uh, so the ordinance allows us to do that, but if it's not as, say it's a zone one, then we can't permit it. And it has to go, it can't stay.
Oh, okay, so there's something in place.
And the RVs have been, um, our code enforcement, they um, said they have sent everyone out there. Who's breaking the rules a um, certified notice.
I think right on that road, there are maybe, anyway, there are several RVs, just as Mister Jenkins brought forward. We're being just everywhere people, and I understand that. I mean, I I know that there's a problem here for, a need for. Some kind of temporary housing, but my concern with the RVs is that that is a fire hazard, what they're doing. And I'm concerned that some family or child is gonna get burned up in one of those things. Is there anything that the power company can do or that we could, you know, appeal to them? I'm just very concerned that, um, you know, like I said, that I've been told it's a fire hazard and that really makes me concerned. For children.
I think when the power company knows about it, they could certainly disconnect the power source. Um, like that particular one, that's the one I know they were, they hotwire into the mobile home that's already permitted and set up. There on the corner, it's, you know, different than the property owner who applied for the Ruben Drive. There at the head of the road, those were wired into that mobile home, so they had them put on notice and the power company. I believe as long as they're aware of it, I think they consider that stealing electric. Um, and they could disconnect the house, the main source of the electricity.
So people could report directly to the electric companies if they know that there are RVs, okay? Okay, the last thing I wanted to bring up, and I talked to you about this a little bit, um, having. Lived in this um, Piersburg community for so many years, um, this road on Ruben Drive. That road is put into a floodplain, and um, right now the river is, it's beyond flood stage right now. And it's expected to continue to rise to, I think, fourteen flood stage at Clough, it's like eleven feet and it's going to fourteen-five, so. Roads like, in areas like this that are in a floodplain, to me it seems like the requirements for um. Putting in a road where you're going to be selling property to other people who may not have any idea. What they're buying when they come here. It seems like there should be a higher standard and I don't know. I mean, to me, it seems like the planning commission should take a lead in making sure that when we have development. Going into these areas like in Piersburg, where it's very likely that there's going to be at minimum. Maybe light flooding or um, lots of um, lots of water and. Very low underground, no place for it to go when it rains, that we should have a higher standard required. For anybody that's even selling one lot. Now, if a family wants to go in there, I'm off, that's their business. But once you move over from taking, doing something for you or your family. To selling to unsuspecting buyers, I think that um, we have a responsibility, and I don't know how to go about. Approaching that, Lisa, and I know I talked to you a little bit, but I think the other commissioners need to um. I think it would be good for us to have a discussion about it. Um, don't we have a responsibility of some sort to the community? To protect them from from this kind of thing? Mister Pinkney's probably been here the longest, so I'll ask you that, Mister Pinkney.
Uh, what what I'm thinking in my mind, and I mentioned it to Ms. Wagner, some point in the very immediate future. Is we have a joint meeting with uh, county council. And the zoning issues and some things in our zoning, we may have to change in regulation, but uh. Early on, uh, Jasper County was very high uh. Pro um, development, residential and commercial and everything because our tax base was so low. But now they want a much lower density, so uh, at some point, we could have a joint meeting with them on zoning and. Different regulations in our zoning, or if we may have to change a thing, we can meet with them and have some discussion, so we all could be on the same page.
How would, uh, Mister Pinkney, and maybe Lisa's the one to lead us in this, but understanding, um. I don't, right now, for this man to get the, or this person, this. Person on Ruben Drive to get the permit um, approved for a nine-one-one address. Um, they simply had to be able to meet the standards so that, I guess, the fire truck could get back there. Which, I'm not sure that um, under certain circumstances in this part of the county. That particularly when the water's high and it's raining and um, when, that a fire truck would be able to get back there or even an ambulance. Um, and that's my concern. I'm certainly not qualified to say that, and I don't know who in the county is. To be honest with you.
Well, one other thing, before they get. A permit to put a mobile home or stick-built house, they got a lot of other hoops they've got to jump through because. Or they have to get approved from DHEC for a separate system, and if it won't perk. Then they won't be allowed, even they'll have an address to that particular lot, but they won't be able to put a house there until. They get that approved. It it's several other processes yet, they still got to go through. They approved. To get an address to each lot they got there, and that's for tax basis purposes. You can't send a a person a tax notice unless you have an address to that property. And but in order to put a resident there, there's several other things they got to do.
So, so um, Lisa, before you permit that trailer, you will have to be sure that they. Um, have access to some sort of um, septic system. I don't think that the Beaufort Jasper provides out there. I don't know for a fact. But so they'll have to prove to you that they can get um.
They have to provide a septic permit, yes.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to know. I don't think I realized that. If I did, I forgot it. Okay, well, I. So Mister Pinkney, what you're saying is you think there are enough things in place to protect these people buying property? That there's no.
If I was buying a lot, they would have to ensure me that it would hurt. Now, they got these uh, engineered system, they make people put in, but that's, you have to hire the engineer to. But that's, you have to hire the engineer to do a modified system. But it, it's different tears, it's different things you got to do before you can occupy on a lot.
Okay, well-
I mean, the first stage is, is now they naming that road, that would give them a nine one address. That doesn't mean that that lot can be used just as it is. They, they got a lot of other things they got to get approved. And the law's supposed to be DHEC, I mean, a light company not supposed to give you light until DHEC have given the building department approval for the separate taxes. And when, uh, Ms. Wagner offers billing inspect, inspect the, the mobile home or stick-built house, then the light company give them power. As Ms. Wagner said earlier tonight, she says, she's seen power poses to some of these, uh, RVs and these utility house. She says, you don't know how to get them other than hot, hot wire from some other place that have been approved. And, and that's something, you know, if we see, it can be reported and they in violation.
Well, I, I know that there were, like I said, several on, on, in that area. Um, I've been told that. Okay, well, that was the other concern, was the quality of the roads. And that really is being decided, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, that's being decided by the fire marshal, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's part of the international fire code. They, the international fire code, um, has standards for access to properties. And part of that is a well-compact, well-compacted road that can hold seventy-five thousand pounds, because that's what it takes if a fire truck is hauling in water. So they said it meets that. I know they put some rock in that base there. Some rock in as a base.
A thing that we need to take a look at. For minor subdivision, it's up to ten, uh, lots as of today.
We actually changed that back to four lots, so it's only four.
Four, okay.
Yes, sir.
Question, Mr. Pinkney?
Yes, go ahead, Doc Butler.
It's subject on the construction of roads. It's very interesting to me that you can build a road, a lot is compacted below the flood level where when it rains, it's gonna flood the road. Don't we have certain, uh, critiques in place where you have to build a road with a certain amount of, of peak where the water falls off the road and-
Well, we do for major subdivision. There's only an exemption for four lots or less.
So you can build it, no matter how low it is, you can just compact it and it works, even if it's underwater.
It usually does. So, you know, that also allows for water to soak in there where impervious surface, it just runs off. So when you have the impervious roads, you have to start, um, designing and being able to address, you have to have stormwater. And in our stormwater ordinance, uh, the stormwater guidelines are based on different rainfall events. So, uh, the impervious, i- if you don't have a good road, now you will have a muddy road that can be washed out if it's not a, a good dirt road. But you also have good dirt roads that sometimes they are very muddy during a rain event. But if they have some of a base to them and, um, they're, you know, they dry up and they're still pretty good and hard. So, uh, our ordinance is set up where we were requiring everybody to do pavement. You had to have paved roads. And then, um, some of our council members years ago, under a different council, some thought it was too harsh for the granddaddy that owns a farm, a hundred or two hundred acres and wants to give his grandchildren or his children some land, but they're so far up in the woods, we wouldn't approve their plots. And they wanted to provide some exemptions where they too could subdivide their land. So then, we came up with, um, maybe you didn't have, you could get away with the gravel roads, but it had to be six inch rock. As long as it didn't create more than fifty vehicle trips a day. If you created more than fifty, you'd do the, um, the hardtop. So, um, so we have that. The fifty or more, you have to provide a hard surface. If it's under fifty, you could get away with six inches of rock. But then we put in a provision only for the minor subdivision where it's no more than four lots, as long as they meet the international fire code.
Yeah, yeah, like I wasn't really concerned about the pervious and non-pervious. I was concerned about the elevation of the road above the, the regular land surface.
Though, most roads aren't built above the flood stage, I ninety-five as it is today. When you come from Georgia, it's in a flood zone. It's not built outside of the flood zone. Um, when they widen it, they're going to raise that, uh, parts of, uh, four sixty-two. There's, almost all of Buford County roads are below the base flood elevation.
Okay.
But that is, there are no- I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Butler. Sorry, Dr. Butler, you first.
Thank you. Those roads are in no way comparable, however, to this little bit of, um, I guess that's crush and run. There's no place for the water to run off of this road. Um, I do, don't think that we need, um, all paved roads to all places. And I did make the distinction between family-owned property that's being, um, being subdivided versus somebody going into the property-selling business as a commercial venture. But this, this road, um, it will be interesting to see how long it remains, how long the people will be able to travel on that road. I, I, I'll keep an eye on it and let you know.
Sure. This man says he's not selling it. He says it's for his children. So I don't know. I mean-
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I hadn't heard that before. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And my only comment to follow up on that discussion is not to be confused with a road through a wetland versus a flood zone is two totally different things. The, the restrictions against any sort of construction, road or, you know, vertical in a wetland has a much different, uh, requirement. Um, which, which I have a project right now in Hardyville that we're, we're delineating the wetland and using the, uh, South Carolina DOT and the Army Corps to get a land bridge over a little ten-foot piece of wetland so we can get to the upland piece of that property. But, um, you know, so not, just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware. There's a huge difference between being in a flood, a low floodplain versus a wetland.
Yeah, I, I, I knew that, true.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just asked one question for Lisa. Am I, Commissioner Jenkins?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
Um, Lisa, I, I don't know, but I just, I was coming through town the other day. You know where the fork is there with Bostick Funeral Home, where that stop sign in the yield?
Yes.
I saw a sign there that says, "Stop annexation or no annexation." It's that fight with the county or the city. There's a big sign there. I don't know who put it there, but it's a big sign there that says, "Stop annexation or no annexation" or something. You seen that sign?
I don't know that I saw the sign, but I think they are popping up everywhere and I am familiar with it. I mean, Ridgeland is, um, considering an application. They've accepted and they're, they took a vote and passed a resolution to consider an annexation petition. And it's of the Chelsea South property and the additional Chelsea properties. We had seen the PDD for Chelsea South about a year and a half ago. So I guess now they're asking Ridgeland to annex. That's what that's about. You know, the county does not annex, so only the municipalities annex.
Oh, okay. I just saw the big sign there. I didn't know what it was for. I stopped and I read it and I didn't know if that was a fight with the county or the city. Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to mention one thing. Uh, I seen a thing in the state paper where the state had approved, uh, a nuisance law with front yard trash and abandoned cars. And so the governor's supposed to be sending some money down to make sure that that get, uh, worked out in each county statewide. And I know we have some regulation on the book about, uh, abandoned and trash and everything, but they said that is a part of the keep, uh, keep the state beautiful. And, uh, I hadn't, I was gonna go online and look at, see all the details in the law. But I noticed something Dr. Butler been talking about for a good while and they said, "This would enhance the value on people property and make the communities more responsible." So, uh, Ms. Wagner, did you ever find any more information on that?
Oh, well, I looked online and tried to, um, search in the, um, South Carolina, uh, Code of Laws, and I couldn't find anything. And I asked the attorney and he checked for me too because he had, he's able to get into some of the, um, the state legislation, um, better than me. And he only came up with like a proposed amendment, but there wasn't much to it. It was uh, just about trash and, uh, storing vehicles like in right-ofways or public areas, um. So he thought maybe that's what it was about and that was a bill that had been presented for an amendment. But he didn't see where that had been adopted yet.
Well, the part I saw in, in the state paper said it was a, it was approved and it was statewide, the whole state of South Carolina. But, uh, if, if that's something coming down the tube, you know, uh, for some areas, that's gonna be a plus. You know, some people don't wanna be responsible for where their communities and everything look at it. If we have to make a law to, to make them do what's right, you know, that would be a great thing for the county. Uh, another question was, uh, opposed to me and I didn't, never noticed this until about two or three weeks ago. On these, uh, secondary farm roads, what's supposed to be the speed limit on these roads?
Um, you know, if they're state road, they have different speed limits and they have them posted. Um, on county roads, I can't say I've really ever saw a speed limit. I think that's been brought up before. I live on a county road, there's not a speed limit sign. I mean, I'm down the road from another county road that's five miles long and there's not a speed limit sign there. But in our land development regulations, we do, um, have some requirements, like if you were building a new subdivision, um, and they're based on the amount of traffic, you know, how many vehicle trips. I don't know right off without looking at them, but I would, and I could pull that up, but I would say it's probably thirty-five miles per hour.
Exactly twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Data, South Carolina, for business and residential districts that are no posted signs, it's twenty-five.
Wow, okay.
Well, people drive seventy, but I know some roads that I've driven for years and I never realized there was no sign that saying that they paved roads that what the speed limit is. And I had an individual call me and ask me, and I looked at three or four of them that is paved road. There's no, no speed limit sign on them. But I mean, they have considered, you know, secondary roads and farm roads with no speed limit.
Yeah, you have to be careful with that because we did a study on our, our road on Boy Creek out near Knolls Island. One of my neighbors was complaining, so he got the DOT involved and we were, uh, we were a thirty-five mile an hour street. And when the DOT came out, did their assessment, they actually moved the speed limit to fifty-five on a two-mile dead-end road with dogs and children and he, he about came unglued, which we all then appealed again and we got it back to thirty-five. But it was, it was certainly an interesting process going through that a couple of years ago.
Well, you know, we, out in Piersburg, um, I appealed to the DOT. This has been several, number of years ago. It's forty-five miles an hour through the cemetery area on Piersburg and all the way down Piersburg Road is at, at least for a while. I'm not sure if it ever changes to a higher speed. But once you get to Church Road, it goes to thirty-five miles an hour. And, um, I was just asking them to change through our neighborhood where there are children and pets and, uh, to thirty-five and, um, that was absolutely a no. And also Honey Hill, I think Honey Hill's fifty-five and they said, "No, they would not change any of those." They, they did some kind, I, I think they did, the study's probably an exaggeration, but they did collect some information. So, yeah, you have to be careful working with them. They did not make anything higher, but, um, they wouldn't change any of the speed limits out here. And the area has significantly changed over the past fifteen years, the amount of traffic. So, I don't know.
But, uh, Miss, but Mr. Chairman, if, you know, while we end the discussion, it's so amazing. If you go in any plantation, it's either five miles per hour or ten miles per hour. But when you get out of there and you get on these roads, you're right. At least you remember about three months ago, I came and talked to you about parking on side of the road, how they park on side of the dirt road and speed limit and you had me refer to the lady that run the county that, what's her name?
Uh, Rose Dobson Elliott. She's the director-
Yeah, you know, I spoke, yeah, I came to you and I spoke to you about the problem. I did go out and talked to her and she sent the code enforcement officer out there. And I tell you what, he, 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 it, it, it was just horrible. But y'all, y'all right, it's a problem. No later than two or three months ago, I came up there and talked to somebody about that. But it's just so amazing when you get in these plantations, they got these, you can walk through these plantations. When you get in a community like ours, you can fly through like an airplane. I don't know, I don't know what it's gonna take, but it is bad. It is real bad.
You're right, Mr. Jenkins. Absolutely right.
It's bad.
So the land development regulation says if you're creating a residential street, um, just a small residential street, the speed limit should be twenty-five miles per hour. And if it's a residential sub collector, which would collect from other roads, should be thirty-five miles per hour. And then it says if it's a private, um, road and a private, uh, landowner responsibility, it can be whatever it's designed for.
I just want to call it to the commissioners and Ms. Wagner, attention, because I was trying to get a definitive answer to tell this person. And when I looked, I never paid no attention to that. I know even on one of the one right in my area, like Ty Brant Road, I drive fifty-five on that and that road don't have no speed limit on it at all. Zigzag Road, it's about three miles and it doesn't have a speed limit on it.
I don't know of any county roads that have a speed limit posted.
Wow.
I don't.
Okay, is there any other question or comments from anybody else? If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Permission at Jenkins, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
We will stand adjourned till our next scheduled meeting. And as Ms. Wagner invited us to, that Monday, what date is that?
I think it's March twenty-fifth. I, and I'll be sending out a notice. We just haven't done that yet. It's the last Monday of March at six o'clock.
Okay. And, uh, as many of you steady through the zoning audits, if, uh, you come across anything that you don't understand or that have concern about, we will make a list so we can get with Ms. Wagner and have a workshop and get the county council and see if we can get some of these things changed. But, uh, as I said, in the past years, we have been very pro-growth and we tried to work with applicants and residents people to get things passed, but now we looking at doing things with much low density. So we gonna have to work through our zoning auditors and the conference plan that, um, we all will be on the same page when it comes to development. I thank all of you for being in this meeting this evening and have a very blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. And good night, everybody.
Good night.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's.